I mean before, before.
He uh, he sure is working hard on that.
Hard worker, son.
Make the motion.
Yeah. He's.
He's got these guys.
My phone number.
A lot better job too.
Why he's learning my phone number?
Look, when some of our employees, alright, uh, now the motion come out executive session.
Motion.
Motion, it's game, segments cross. Let uh, record, show no actual mistake.
I'm curious to see how this article is gonna come. I'm, I'm, I'm curious to see how this, this newspaper article is gonna unveil. Alright, we ready?
Slay.
Maybe. We might be ready.
From a snapper.
Yeah, he sent me something. Why didn't he send me something?
Appreciate y'all sticking around.
Huh?
We were going anywhere.
He got a couple dollars now.
But no, he sent me something about. It was something else.
No.
Or you give him a re.
Sorry about that.
No, this is you.
He means anything? I guess.
Let's show a picture, sharing pictures up here. Boy, y'all see that one?
Sorry about that. We got a collapsed pipe deal we were looking at real quick. Sorry about that. Sorry.
Couple of things. One, we just wanted to follow up on the conference plan and see if you guys had any comments or changes you'd like us to, to, to change on the, the plan?
I think that there was some comments and questions. Did you get the lady with the, uh, trailer division, her information? Mobile homes, manufactured housing? No?
But she, she wanted a copy of it.
Yeah, she wanted to know where we were looking to change from agriculture to residential? Yeah.
Yeah. She called all, me, you know.
She didn't call me. She called Jared and I, I, I was just passing along. Jared informed me of it.
Well, she wanted to help, I see what she's getting at. But I don't think it really affected.
To this point, I have not released copies to anyone.
Are we, are we changing agriculture to residential anywhere?
The only, the only areas, uh, of the land use plan, Greg, I think was very few. The parcels in and in, out, rest more changed from residential state to more medium density residential. There's some stuff up on Pisgah Road that changed.
Hey, hey, hey. Oh, I just woke up. Go ahead, I'm playing.
There was some area that Renee pointed out that was, uh, martial that really needed to go back to residential.
Well, she's not gonna care unless it goes from agriculture to residential. She ain't gonna care.
Recall any change from ag to residential.
Okay. Here we go. Yep, yep.
Well, there's a lot of it needs to be changed, but I'm gonna fight the fight now.
Well, now's the time to do it. Now's the time to do it.
I know, but you gonna have a.
I mean, seriously, man.
I, I know.
I say now's the time because you've got three years to get through and.
I understand. It, it needs to be a lot of, uh. The, uh. Education.
You just can't get off this, can you?
Renee, you got any comments on this?
You just can't, you just can't get off this.
God, boy.
You, are you good with everything?
Alright, guys, just, I, I just wanna make sure that y'all are all on the same page about this. What you're holding now are zoning changes. What we were just talking about is comp plan, two different things. The comp plan is a guide, so it tells you what you're looking at on the line. Zoning ordinance amendments, which is what this is, zoning ordinance amendments would be after you adopt your comp plan, which is the guide, the forward look. Then you adopt this stuff, alright? And this is changes to your current zoning ordinance that are being proposed. You have to vote to approve these.
Minimum, so the minimum size house should be a thousand per foot?
Yes. In the, in the some zones.
I'm not real keen on.
I say that we just scratch number one.
Thousand per foot.
And, and just move two to one and just leave one out.
Yeah.
And say one will be to the discretion of the board.
That, that's why, I mean, we were, early on we were asked to address, or we could, uh, that, that's certainly y'all's call, how, how we address it. The, the other proposed changes or some things such as adding definitions, major minor subdivisions. The, uh, the food trucks were addressed.
Yeah, what'd we say about that?
We put some regulations in, uh, we made reg, reg them as far as, uh, this land storage hours of operation. I think we.
They would say they had to be in parks, public parks or something. Do we, do we say that or not?
Uh, we're allowing them in certain zoning districts, I believe.
Right.
Okay.
We have relegated them as an allowed use in industrial.
Alright.
And we have, uh, allowed them only by conditional use in commercial.
Okay.
So they cannot be in a residential.
Okay, so they're in commercial now. Even though they're expired on their six months. Oh, he, he ain't never opened. I mean, I'm just don't fool with. I don't, not, have you got any complaints at all on it? Yeah, I just let them flounder over there if they, if they want to, you know, operate at flexible hours.
This, uh, having this in place, you, you restrict their location.
Yes, sir.
Number one.
Yes, sir.
Number two, you require them to meet all the health department requirements.
Yeah.
Number three, you make sure that if, if they use any signage, it's, it's not garish, it's not some huge billboard. You're lit, you're, you're placing limitations on how they can advertise.
We definitely need something for the future, for sure.
Good question. So this gives you the ability to restrict hours of operation. There are a number of, I think, that are good regulations that, that, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys basically surveyed how other jurisdictions are handling ending operations like this. And, and this is a boiling down of the best, what we think are the best regulations that allows at least some flexibility, but keep a good control.
Yeah, I don't want this.
We also established a permit fee.
Yeah.
That's, uh, initial fees, point five hundred dollars.
That'll do it. That'll handle it.
You know, it's hilarious. There for a while, it was all the big rage. They were all over Jackson. He's all happy about it until all the brick and mortar folks got upset. Then they decided to move them to one little location in a certain time of the year, so.
But, you know, really, I don't see they making a big impact on these.
We're rural.
Brick and mortar ones.
Yeah, we're rural, so we're not gonna have an issue.
They really did.
Today's thing about permit fee, I, I mean, that looks like that's a fairly aggressive fee, but the truth of the matter is, you're losing that law because you don't have brick and mortar, so you gotta be able to recapture some of that animal loss there. Number two, you wanna, you wanna restrict this to what I'll call, um, most likely to succeed. Then their operations. So only the ones that are really serious about this and doing it right are gonna be able to afford that permit fee.
Pretty much take care of them, I think.
I, I think that's, that's the way to handle this.
Uh, just under number four, we're, uh, I know we discussed this in the past, but we're clarifying, uh, the hardship under the RE one zone. How we allow manufactured homes there. Uh, right now, it was kind of vague in that basically said you could replace one under hardship conditions. They didn't really define what those are. So we're just defining that, uh, where talks about, uh, people physical disabilities and medical issues and so on. Uh, to give you something to, to base, um, the conditions as to why you're allowing that. Number five, what this is addressing is under the reservoir community district. It's the only area in the county where we address sign regulations. Last year, uh, well, now being twenty fifteen, so a little, a little over a year ago, the US Supreme Court came down with a decision on how you can regulate signage. Uh, and they ruled that you cannot regulate based on content. So we had to go into the sign regulations inside the reservoir district and amend those where we're not regulating, uh, based on content. We're still regulating the placement, the size and lighting and types of signs, uh, but we just had to make sure the language was, was clarified as to not, not regulating content.
Well, yeah, I don't move. I wish, I wish there's something be done. Every, all these intersections and, and whenever I have them pick up, uh, turn in a trash work order, I usually put in there, pick, clean the intersections up. So they put all these signs up there and they leave them. And, and also they're all nailed to, they get up there and nail them all up on the trees and things and they, they even, well, I know this is a violation, but they stick them on the stop sign, on the post. You know, not covering the sign. But all these intersections, I get people complaining because they're, it's not that they put them up, it's they don't take them down. You know, I mean, I don't know if there's anything, I don't know, I guess we'd have to have something there. I mean, how does that?
I think we can just do a, uh, a sign marshal, eh, come election time. And, and appoint me.
And appoint who?
Me. I'll do it for free. I'll do it for free.
A sign marshal.
Yeah.
You really gonna go out there and pull a sign off of a tree or a telephone pole or?
Yep.
Say I had to take your sign up. The one over at the welding shop was on the ground near the ditch. I put it back up for you.
Well, thank you. And, and, and if it was somebody else's, I'd take it down.
Now I see where you're going with this. Okay.
Campaign signs are, are a little different. It's the ones they just stick up there for.
Yard sales.
Yard sales, the puppy lost, uh, firewood, work on lawnmowers, uh, but they just leave.
Hey, where are our sizes at? I knew we did something for the reservoir area. Where's, where's the sizes for the rest of?
Sizes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Insurance.
Yeah. Buy your own car.
What, what number is it under?
Yep, we're under number five, uh. We regulate roundabout signs. We'll not say the height of eight feet, um.
Uh, what, where, what page are we on? Five. Oh, I'm a page too far back. Okay. Alright, here we go. Roundabout sign, those signs. Eight feet above. Forty square feet. What's the size of, how many square feet in a sheet plywood?
Thirty-two.
Oh, that's thirty-two. Eight by four. Yeah, okay. Alright. Damn good. Alright, okay. Yeah, that, that was enough, I think. Well, the others can be smaller, right? You ain't gonna be like Brandon, be the sign Nazi over here.
Flowood.
Brandon, you know.
Flowood's rough on.
Man, I got, I can't, we're, we're being recorded.
Okay.
Flowood's tough on.
Alright.
But I think you even gotta pay a fee in the city of Flowood.
Yep.
Or you have to, at least a permit.
Yeah, I think it's just a permit.
You gotta permit and a fee in Flowood.
It's a fee too?
For such a certain period of time.
Well, well, now, now that you're incumbent, you may get a little, you know.
They help you out if you're an incumbent on it?
No, because they'll sure pick your signs up off of airport road in a heartbeat.
They'll pick them up anywhere.
Alright.
I could expand on this a lot, but I'm not going to. I was nearly to the point of visiting with Brian and not by choice.
Yeah.
That was, uh, that's not like real.
I am, and. You know, it's, it's really get to the extent where you go put a sign out the night before the election at the polling place, come back next morning, sucker's gone. I mean, that's just extreme.
I'm putting cameras on all mine from here on out. Watch it live, get a live fee.
They'll just take that too.
I'm gonna hide the camera. And I'm gonna put tracking devices on the sign, you know, where we just track them around.
Oh, you got some high-tech signs. Alright.
Alright, again, that, that's in relation, this is not county five.
Underling the zoning, residential zoning.
The rest of the proposed zoning changes, uh, some of it's a cleanup, um, some wording that we've gone over with Renee, uh.
One suggestion on our rezoning, I know our signs, though, can we put it on our website too? Yes, ma'am, yeah. That's alright, okay. So I was just asked about that.
Backing up on the signs, the sign deal like I was talking about, is there anything that could be, we could incorporate that in there some way? Like I, what I was referring to.
Well, it's already illegal.
Yeah, if they're putting on stop signs or.
No, I'm just saying put them up at the intersection.
Yeah, it's already illegal.
Well, who enforced it?
The county.
They, they don't, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I guess, I guess you better talk to the sheriff. I don't. I think our road crew just, we just need to tell them, pick them all up.
We have something there illegal to put up at intersections. Yeah, I didn't know we had that.
Yeah, if it's in our county right away, we can carry that.
And the cities regulate theirs.
When you, when you down on those rural roads, you just back a ditch to back a ditch. That's not rural county right away.
You're exactly right, and don't forget though, that, um, a, a lot of our roads are state aid roads or state highways, and that's gonna be, you know, from DOT's brands.
And they do.
So, you need to be thinking about where you see.
Okay, clear, clear road.
Yeah, that's a county.
That's, that's state aid, but they're not gonna come out and pull those signs up and just cluster right there at the four-way stop.
That's right. Yep, so then it becomes a, 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 a traffic hazard issue at that point here. So if there's any, if it's gonna take away the visibility of existing traffic control device, then it's, it's certainly moving.
Well, if it's not election time, and I'm, I'm, I understand people putting signs up for election, it's not that. For, I'm certain every time that, that they go out and peel, pick up trash, they pull them down, pick them up. I mean, they just leave them there, and that's when you start getting these, I mean, tractor for advertising, this and that, but just stuck up right at the intersection.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one time truck was out for every leg, and the next day I tried to get all the road crews. I said, y'all go by every road precinct, any legs are signed, you see, pull it up, paint the shop, we saw them, can't have a camp, there's a couple people.
That's nice of you, man.
That's an election, I understand, yeah. Cause it's election night, but election night, I might pull a mine up. But, but I, I, yeah, I understand that, but I'm talking about liking these. There's certain intersections all over the county that they love to stick them up.
Yeah, like windshield wipers, um, junk engine, rail delay, so, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we buy mobile homes, we buy, uh, old cars, junk cars, I mean, they stick them up all over the street. Hay for sale. Puppies for sale.
Hey, we don't put anything in here about time, though, um.
About what?
Are we gonna do that?
Put anything here, what, about sign?
Time.
Time?
As in, when you can start.
How many days before an election, et cetera, et cetera. We talked about that before.
Well, the, the overlay district has it.
The problem is that based on this new, um, ruling, is that we can't say election signs. So you can't say ten days after the election.
Well.
Forty-five days. That is, when Dave says it's regulated based on content, the actual suit itself, um, was about a temporary sign that the church put out.
Yeah.
Every Sunday, every Saturday night and Sunday, and they were being treated differently. So we can't, it's not what does the sign say. It's not so much about First Amendment content. It's more about, is this a real estate sign and do I have to read it to say Becky Moss Realtor?
But, uh, the city say you cannot put political signs out forty-five days prior to the election.
Right.
That is now, under this new ruling, that would be.
Void.
Yes.
Okay, there's no sense in doing it.
Back in the overlay this.
It would void there.
Okay.
Which I recommended proposed changes on it. We did the best we could, so we set fire to an event. So you would be able to say, okay, so the election is.
So did you do that in here?
Yes.
Where?
Um, under twenty-six oh nine oh four, um, under A.
Yeah.
Temporary signs for individual lots, and then, um, we go down, it should be in here. Yeah, number five. Alter bridge and temporary signs shall be removed within ten days of the event.
Ocurring.
But is.
Nothing on the front side of it?
Yeah, well, like when you put it up.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's gonna, that's gonna make all the voids of the overlay head?
Yeah, this is, this is.
I think it trumps it, doesn't it?
Boy, you gonna hear some.
So, are you not wanting to put more than one sign? If they got ten acres, you can't put one sign? Ten acres is a big, ten acres is a big spot.
And we had to.
Especially if you've got two roads on a corner.
Now, if it's got frontage, we do allow multiple frontages.
Okay.
What am I worried about, man? I ain't gotta worry about none of that stuff. Shoot, I ain't gonna have no opponent.
Cause you have to group them all together, cause you have to say real estate signs, development signs, election signs.
If we drop the timeframe on it, if somebody, you know, it may take them a year to sell their property.
What about the deal on multiple candidates?
Well, that's, that's true, by selling the property.
Per event, activity, or candidate.
Hey, Brian.
Per candidate.
I had an idea, man. You mind if, uh, if I just get an extension? Wherever your sign is, say Anne J. Bishop out beside it. Alright, okay.
Wait, how you know Brian's gonna have an appointment?
Well, he still gonna put some signs out.
If he got an appointment, he won't.
I would, uh, rather you not put mine right beside Jay's.
Distance me from Jay.
Put mine on the other side.
You know, that came up this weekend. Somebody made a comment about that. About me running for office and the clearing ledger loved me so much that they put my, my face on the front page.
Yeah.
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 This weekend?
Nah.
No, they brought it up, but it's, it's back a while back.
Yeah.
There you go.
So is that it?
That's it. The, the rest of the zoning changes are ones that we've talked about before, such as, uh, removing the catastrophic provision under, uh, uh, the non-conforming use.
Say that again, what?
Under non-conforming uses, currently there's a provision, there's catastrophic loss provision.
Yeah.
Uh, the problem with that provision is it, it goes against everything that you read before that. It says if you have a non-conforming use and it's destroyed more than fifty percent of the value of the structure, you can't replace it, but then we added this provision. This, and quite frankly, this was done back in oh-three, oh-four, uh, my bills here, and, and I think it's just kinda one of them.
Help people out.
Yeah, it, it, the problem is it contradicts everything before.
Yeah, but what's that, what does that mean? If, if what? Give an example. Somebody's house burned?
If you lost it all, you don't have to pay to get it rebuilt.
Let's talk about a trailer. That would get nice.
Okay.
It would use, okay, so it's a trailer. It, it burns. It burns to a certain extent that it, that it would take more than fifty percent of its value to get it back ordered for us. That would trigger, uh, the provision that says you cannot replace that, and therefore that non-conforming use has got to go. We're not gonna allow a trailer to be there anymore. The provision that Dave has wanted to remove was basically a backdoor, how that trailer can stay there even though it was more than fifty percent burnt. So you're just, you're setting the right line.
So you can put another one in there.
Uh, under that, under that, uh, ca- catastrophic provision.
On the old part.
So we just take out catastrophic altogether?
Correct.
Can we still have the authority to waive it if we want?
Well, you can allow a, a conditional use if it's, I mean, just like you would go through any other conditional use.
So there still would be a way for us to assist someone if they need be.
It's kinda hard to say you can't put it in if that's all that's living.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's what, you know, we're trying to accomplish here in that RE one section where this thing, we looked at where y'all are allowing a lot of conditional uses.
Now, let's talk about, let's talk about the facts on that right quick, Jared. Just, just from a policy. You've already said ahead of time, the area where this unit is located has changed to such a degree that it, we don't need that use there anymore. That's what you said on the front end. You're allowing it to be there as a non-conforming use.
It's grandfathered.
Correct.
But not replacing it grandfathered.
We don't need that, that don't need to be in there, and so there has to be a way for us to say, we don't, we, we've already given you assistance and help by allowing it to be grandfathered. If circumstances happen such that it needs to go, then it just needs to go. You've already said that doesn't need to be in there, so.
But it's still, but you, you know it's still gonna come back to us as a conditional use.
And I think what Dave is, he's very artfully and carefully telling you, yep, you can do that. The problem with doing that is you run, you do great violence to your regulations.
Right.
And you set yourself up for problems in other places.
No, I'm just saying, that is that small one that if, you had to have.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and what we did, we, we did look at, Renee gave us the information for the past five, six years as to what, you know, rezonings y'all have had, initial use, uh, requests. We tried to look at those areas where you're getting a lot of that. That RE one was one of them, and that's why we were trying to kinda clean up that RE one section. Uh, currently, I think it just says you replace one under hardship. They didn't really define hardships, so that's why we were trying to find that, um, uh, in, in the earlier section we saw, uh, to just kinda clarify that.
You know, Jared, getting back to the other deal, um, you know, before, when, when you and Greg, y'all took such a huge swath, you know? It could be, you could just do a little bit, you know, and may not catch too much grief. But.
My problem is just like the issue, the thing we ran into down on the four, four sixty-nine and, uh, Mike Creek Farm, where the guy, I think it's agriculture, the guy put, uh, one in, mobile home moved in there. Uh, moved in there, then he, uh, put a second one in, and then, uh, later he went with the third in. Alright, well, that triggered, triggered the, uh.
Sub-rig.
Sub-rig. Well, the loophole was I just deed that to my dad, and I put the third one any, anyway, deed that land to my dad.
And it's all got road frontage. They all got road frontage.
Well, not necessarily, but they backed right up to the man's place, and, you know, but anyway, but he lives in, uh, in Tiff, on Tiffany Circle. See, he done lived there. And so it was, there was nothing to prevent that because, is that correct? It was agriculture, right? Right.
Yeah.
It's not a zoning issue at that point. It became, became really a sub-rig issue.
Yeah, but because it was not, it's not zoned, you want anything stopped and putting one, two, and then to deed that third place went out, as far as, uh.
So if we changed from agriculture to RE one A, then they could put possible manufactured homes in.
As a conditional use.
Right.
The RE one A requires a conditional use.
Or if we just hit a R one, they're out, period. There's no.
Right. The RE one A was all we wanted. That way, the, the, the third one, or the second one, it would have been conditional use for the second one and the first one.
If, if, if it's RE one A, it's one dwelling unit per lot. Under the laws, that's Jennifer's biggest hangup, was us moving from A one to RE one A, because it's outright allowed at A one, and it's not in RE one A in the way that Renee kinda structures our A one stuff.
We try to limit it to family use only.
That's right.
I tell you, him and, him and Greg were born, like, we did this.
Right, it's, what now?
Yeah, yeah, that, now that is what Chris referring to, one name.
Okay.
That is, we're recommending we, we do include that one dwelling per lot in the axon.
Right.
Oh, really?
To clarify, yeah, to clarify, cause what we were having was, you know, three hundred acres of property, and they'd all wind them up, you know, in one spot.
So.
And so we're trying to, what we're trying to do at that point was to, to make it so that they didn't, basically turn in a subdivision.
Well, that's what he was, he wanted to, and this is stopping because of the third one, but he was wanting to add some more in there, and they basically make them, they'll try to walk.
Trying to.
I can get into more shit, man.
You're not allowed to have subdivision, axon, so.
Okay, how's that gonna help? How will that help this situation?
That necessarily limited, limits it to that first two lots, Jared, because once, if you say one dwelling unit per lot, and he's got to divide that third lot.
Second, well, he had to divide that second lot, didn't he?
Yes, sir. Yeah, however he was gonna do the division.
I mean, well, you said one per lot.
Yep.
He didn't have three. He had just seven acres of land.
Right.
And he put three in there on that seven acre.
That's right.
And I would like to, really like to stop at one, or at least the second one, for sure.
You, you're gonna be able to get away with, with the two under this current reg, because that's just one subdividing activity which doesn't treat the sub-rigs. It's that second subdividing activity. So once he created a third lot, and he'd have to do it under regs, he'd have to create a lot.
Well, he did. He deeded it to his daddy.
Right.
So it's really not gonna help solve that problem.
No, it will.
Huh?
For the third one, he, he deeded it to his dad.
Right, so how would that?
He had one out there for years.
Right.
And then he said he was gonna put another one there for a family member, and it was on agricultural, so it didn't.
And then he said he was gonna put another one there for a family member and it was on agricultural, so it didn't. But then when he came to the third one, you know, the sub-rigs, you can't, you can't develop or anything, that would be more of a development. And so we called him on that and he said, okay, well, then I'll get a separate acre and I'll, I can come home on a separate acre and that's what he did, that's what he deeded to his dad.
I understand, but how is this wording gonna prevent that right there from happening?
They can only have one dwelling per parcel or per lot.
Well, I mean, that would keep him just divided up to different lots.
Well, cause once he divides more than the second time, the sub-rigs kick in or, uh, but that new wording on the subdivision, it says.
Yeah, we, we thought of a major different subdivision.
Don't forget that up to this point, we haven't required an actual lot under A one.
Yep.
Now, now we will require some sort of, so, so it's a, a zoning ordinance problem that they would have and a sub-rig problem. So previously he got around the zoning problem, but, but he got caught by the sub-rig problem, but there's greater protection if we say, if you're going to, uh, place a unit on an A one parcel. You can have one per parcel, so now you're gonna necessarily require them to start subdividing if they're going to make more than one dwelling unit on that area of land. They're going to have to subdivide it off to a parcel and that's gonna push them into a zoning, uh, subdivision rig problem and they will get more than two if that way.
Yep.
Okay. That's, that's what's happening more than once down in that area, somebody else tried the same thing.
Yeah, well, I think this will certainly help, uh, like I say, you may end, still end up with two, that would, it would hopefully help prevent the third one.
Well, if, and all the way around would be do it, rezonate to RE one A and then it'd be, uh.
Condition.
Yeah, conditional use.
Right. Alright, the, I think that's, that's, other than some, some more minor text changes, um, where we really need to go from here and if I'm, if I understand the direction we're given is, we'll take off the first part. We're, uh, addressing minimum square foot.
Thank goodness Bob's not here, he would have, he had a fit about it.
The, the next couple steps we need to take is, uh, set a public hearing for the conference of plan, um, advertise for that.
I mean, do y'all agree with that, are y'all fine with that, us not setting perm, a, a fixed square foot on houses where we still, we've been able to operate this long where we get with a developer, we tell the developer what we want and they work with us.
I like, I like the way we do it, because if we say a thousand, that's where it's gonna be.
Exactly.
I don't want that, yeah, I don't want that.
Alright, okay, yep.
Alright, we'll remove that, the second phase, uh, of course, we need to set a public hearing for conference of plan, advert, uh, advertise for that and I'll provide you with the, yeah, advertising.
And make sure you send, uh, her a, um, a sheet where he's changing everything to R one down in his district.
Go ahead.
We also need to hold a public hearing for zoning changes, so, um, we did the same meeting, but we need to have a separate hearing for any zoning amendments.
Well, what aggravates, let me see, I ain't talking about that.
Yeah, you're recording. Yeah.
If y'all are okay, why don't we suggest at this point, we'll come back on the thirteenth and set our, we'll, we'll have hearing dates for you on your comp plan and your zoning ordinance changes. We'll have a hearing date for that, we'll probably set it over into February as our actual hearing date, y'all okay with that?
Yeah.
We'll set the hearing on the thirteenth.
Alright, that's fine.
Yes.
We're just gonna make sure we get it in the paper fifteen days.
Fifteen days.
Okay.
We'll probably set that mid-February meeting.
Hey, nice clock, by the way.
Oh, that's a borrowed one out there.
Yeah, I can't even, I can't even see it.
I like the bigger one better, but it's better than that.
I can't even see it.
Well, I can, I can at least make out close to where we are, so.
I, I was in here today that, that, that.
Oh, yeah.
Serious, yeah.
I, I bet.
Magnus was on the other side, he comes running out to tell us he didn't do it.
Dave, I'm just curious, did you ever get that sinkhole in your turkey hunting lease fixed?
We did.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Carter, I care of that.
Johnny Carter, he leases some land from Johnny Carter and he had a sinkhole in it, I was like, you ain't never getting that son of a gun filled in, but you did though, huh? I'm, I'm surprised, alright.
I appreciate y'all's hard work on it, very much, both of you.
I think we're about finished, can I, can y'all stay just a minute and let me, and if Daniel can, five minutes to look at the map that we have looked at for, uh.
Voting?
Yeah, precinct out, I don't remember the number, but the one it fills that versus Fanning.
Hey, you, are you good with what you got still with agriculture, I mean, I, I know you booked a lot of yours agriculture, you good with?
Yep.
Do you have any that needs to be tweaked?
He wants some help.
Oh, man, out there where I'm at, the people that have the agricultural land are very good about the way they handle it.
Well, they have big track.
Yep, and they're not, I mean.
Have y'all talked to Bob?
Buy or put.
Have y'all talked to Bob about that?
They just, they don't turn loose of it.
Changing to, from agricultural to residential.
So it's not a problem really, it's, uh, I would have more of a problem if I were to rezone it out of agriculture, they would not fit.
No, no, I mean, you so much of a neat statement, I could, I do have little pockets.
Yep.
I had to see what would come out, good Lord, last time, we were being restricted to the number of cows you could have on the farm.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, that's what they were saying, yeah, anyway, okay, well, I have a motion, do you have anything else? Do I have a motion to recess then until, uh, what was it? Thirteen.
I have one question, how long is our contract, I know we, we said hours, um, how long is he supposed to take to do his job, our computer guy?
It's a block of forty hours.
Yeah.
So when we use that forty hours, it would come back to us for some more?
Yeah.
If he doesn't use all those, then they are.
He won't charge us.
Alright.
So we can come back and use it wherever we need it.
I'm just curious when we'll hear from him.
I think, I think we'll hear from him by the thirteenth, to be honest with you.
Second.
At least an update.
Yeah.
Alright.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, Detective Bishop, all present, aye?
Aye. Alrighty.